One nation, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you for showing up on this beautiful evening. Let's get to it. Any comments by visitors this evening? I'm looking at an empty, mostly empty room, but any comments by visitors? All right, seeing none. I'm going to move to comments by board members, and I'm going to kick it off, if you don't mind, with just what I wrote for appreciation. We're coming off of Teacher Appreciation Week. However, I don't think that a week will suffice. So, I'd just like to say, in a world where recognition of those who really deserve it, I would like to take this time to express my deepest gratitude to our teachers and school staff. They consistently go above and beyond, working long hours and sacrificing personal time to ensure that each child receives the best possible education and care. Today, as we express our appreciation, let us also reflect on the profound impact that these dedicated individuals have on the lives of our students. They are not just educators, they are mentors, role models, and caring, respectful adults. They instill in our children the values of hard work, perseverance, a growth mindset, and kindness, shaping them into responsible and compassionate individuals. As the school board chair, I want to publicly say that your work is noticed and appreciated. Your dedication inspires us all to strive for excellence and civility in our respective roles. Looking ahead, let us reaffirm our commitment to supporting and uplifting our teachers and school staff in every way possible throughout the year. Thank you. Anyone else would like to say any words? It's time to do it. Just go ahead.
All right, I'll go next. Ditto, it's what Maggie said. But I just wanted to say, like, our teachers and our administrators are amazing, and they hold up our community and our precious children, you know, and make sure everything runs smoothly. I don't think that anything can ever say enough thank you to what they do, but I appreciate everyone and all their time and effort in what's this amazing city that we have. That's it. Thanks.
All right. I'd like to recognize everyone in the SAU 56th school community. Thank you for all that you do today and every day to shape the future of our students and our community. Please know that your efforts to adapt and innovate do not go unnoticed, and your impact reaches far beyond the schools. Each of you do an amazing job, and that continues to make Somersworth the best. Thanks.
It's an interesting thing for me. It's kind of meta, because I'm also a teacher, and I've been doing teaching for 20 years, just in a different place. My wife asked me tonight, "Well, what would you want someone to say to you?" And I think, I just recognize the unique position school board is in to connect families and children and staff, and make the school district, actually just facilitate. We're just here to facilitate what the school needs. And so, I, you know, there's just so many things about Teacher Appreciation Week, and hopefully, I hope everybody feels appreciated, teacher, staff. Like, I hope people have done a good job appreciating you. Like, I appreciate you as my colleagues. Like, I know what it's like to have a teacher bestie, and what it's like to be able to have that look in the hallway and not even have to say anything about it, or to have the amazing pairs and staff, or, you know, support staff take kids under their wing. And it's just the heart and soul of a school. So, I just, I guess, want to say, I'm here for you, we're here for you, we're here for the kids and the parents too, but like, you're the third part of this triangle, the staff. The staff, it's the staff, the kids, and the parents, and we're just here for you. And I hope if you don't feel appreciated, you let us know, and that we can do better. And if you do feel appreciated, which I hope so, just, I want to keep appreciating you. So, that's where I'm at.
Well, we'll just go down the line if you don't mind with her?
I was going to wait until the end, but everyone's doing their congratulations and thanks and to the teachers now, so I will also chime in. I am reminded of a quote that many of you may know. "When a child speaks, the parent has already spoken." And that is intended to show when you have a child that is poised, like ours, who is curious, like ours, good-spirited, supportive of everyone else, like what we have in our school system, the parent, our teachers, has already spoken. So, I look at the product in our students, and we know that it is all because of our good teachers. And so, thank you. Thank you very much.
Wow, there's not really words. It happens to be a week on the calendar, so I guess we're all taking this time to speak right now. But I think we hopefully can speak throughout the year, every day, about how much we appreciate the staff. And honestly, that's why, well, I can't speak for everyone else, but that's the only reason why I'm here, is for the staff and students and families in this area. And, you know, teachers for sure have shaped not only my life, but the best thing in my life, my daughter. And so, I am forever grateful. Thanks.
So, I feel like teaching, it's sort of like parenting, that, you know, what do they say? It's like thankless. Like, you just, you don't get the, you don't get, you don't hear "thank you," right, a lot? So, you do a good job because you know that's the right thing to do, but you don't always hear "thank you," I appreciate that. In fact, you know, you maybe hear grumbling, complaining, whatever. But I feel like teaching, like parenting, for many people, is also a calling. And, you know, I just want the teachers out there and, you know, the staff, educators, to know that we know that you work, you know, once that last bell rings, your day isn't done, that you take work home with you, that you work on the weekends, that the summer isn't just sitting on the beach for three months, and that you don't go into it for the money. And so, I think that's, you know, that's one of those things, right? You, with all the challenges that we know are inherent to the profession, and you still choose to go into it, says a lot about just what, you know, what you value. So, thank you. You know, yeah, beyond just the week. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that word "calling," because it is a calling. It's a calling, it's a passion, and it's a skill. It's a skill that not everyone has. And that's something that I recognize and appreciate. And I can't think of any other profession that has the same type of life-lasting influence than teachers. I can barely remember many of the names that I've met in the last week, but I can recite, and I won't, by the way, although I have done it, I think, throughout the years here. I can recite the names of every one of my teachers that I've had from first, first again, and through high school. And again, I can't do that with many of the people that I meet throughout the day. And I think that says a lot. And there isn't much time that goes by that I don't think of some of the words that were said to me by some very good, very passionate, motivated teachers, and including, you know, some of the teachers that stopped by my locker on the, you know, in between class and had said to me, "Hey, I really like what you said last week." You know, and I think that kind of, those words are powerful and remembered, even if it might seem like a passing moment. But that's the type of influence that teachers have, the type of life-lasting influence that teachers have on children, and the children's children. So, thank you.
When I think about teachers, I also am brought to consider teachers that I had and had a lasting impact on me. And as I also went through the school district at Hilltop and the middle school, I think about a lot of teachers in particular. And it isn't always the forms of education that I received from these teachers, but rather the relationship that was built with those teachers, where I felt seen, I felt understood, I felt accepted, I felt safe in their classroom. And so, I think, I want to say thank you to all the teachers, specifically, not for what they're doing in terms of educating, but all the work they do to see these young people, validate them. You know, I think about my test hall third-grade teacher at Hilltop, and I have a photo of me with a book that says, "I want to be an artist." And I am currently still working as a professional artist today. And so, much of that is because she expressed that being a valid way of being in the world. And I also think that, you know, people talk about how, for children, what they need most for success is to have a single adult individual see them and witness their experience, validate their experience. And we often hope that's apparent, but oftentimes, that doesn't happen. And it is left to a teacher to really see what a student needs in their life and validate their experience. So, again, I just think that all the sort of emotional work that teachers do to support these families, it's sort of upholding our whole community. So, thank you.
Wow, all right. Thank you to this board for those words. I really appreciate that. Really thank you for all, for saying something, no requirement to do so, but it's really meaningful and important. Okay, we'll move along to our consent calendar. What is the wish of the board to adopt the consent calendar?
Make a motion to adopt the consent calendar.
Second? Any discussion about any items on the consent calendar? All right, seeing none. All in favor of adopting the consent calendar, say aye. All right, it's adopted. All right, we'll go to our reports this evening. We'll start with our superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have one thing to ask of you tonight. We're in the midst of hiring people, and we're competing with other schools. And we're, the principals and other administrators asked me if I could seek your approval to hire between now and the board meeting, rather than waiting, because we're afraid we might lose some folks. So, if you could just suspend your rules and allow me to hire for the next two weeks, that would be greatly appreciated.
Okay. All right, looking for a motion to suspend rules.
I make a motion to suspend rules.
Wait a second. Okay, any discussion? Yes.
What rule?
It's not an action item, it's a report item. So, we're suspending the rules under reports to make this an, you know, like, not going through new bit, a first read and a second read, since of the immediacy of it.
I was thinking that there was some kind of rule prohibiting you from...
No, no, typically, it comes to us as, you know, at our board meetings, but at this time, it makes so much sense to be able to act on it through the administration to hire.
And we're really getting some great candidates. What's fascinating to me is we've had three students from UNH who have interned here that have been recently hired. They liked it so much as interns that they applied, and we know them, so that's been great. So, yeah.
All right. All in favor of suspension of the minutes, say aye. Aye. All right, now we're looking for a motion to grant this, the superintendent hiring for May 14th to May 28th.
I make a motion to allow the superintendent to make the requisite hires he's recommending in the next two weeks.
Perfect. Wonderful. Any discussion about that? All right, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Great, that's wonderful. Good luck.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Show them, show them the beginning of this meeting, of the minutes. Just say, "Come aboard, come to Somersworth." Okay. Anything else on your end?
No, a couple of things down below.
Okay, perfect. All right, no other reports this evening? Committee reports, our standing committee, budget and revenue, Chair Marsh?
Thank you, Chair Larson. The budget and revenue committee has not met since our last meeting.
Okay. Building grounds and transportation committee, Chair Clark?
So, building and grounds has not met since our last meeting. We're trying to finalize a meeting to get together to view the fields, because we have not seen those since snow, and clearly, there's no snow on the ground, so we want to make sure we can get out there, but we'll post that soon.
Great. Grounds do look beautiful this time of year. Just looked, saw today. They look wonderful. Educational programs and community outreach, I don't believe there has been a meeting?
There has not been a meeting and will not be a meeting until August.
Okay. All right, and policy?
Ditto.
All right.
I know we haven't, we have not met, no meeting probably until August.
Okay, perfect. All right, moving down, there's no presentation this evening. Agenda item number seven, our policy adoption. We have one, policy for first reading, GBCD, background investigation and criminal history records check to replace existing policy.
I make a motion to read this policy by title only.
Do I have a second on that? Please. Okay. Any discussion about the title? No? All in favor, say aye. Okay. All right, this is, you know, for first reading. It'll be at the second reading at the May 28th meeting. And look it over. If there's any real nitty-gritty, please reach out about questions. In the meantime, new business.
Oh, do I need to read it?
Oh, yeah. Oh, I, yeah, Lou, you can read it. I mean, yeah.
Okay.
I read it out loud, but you read.
Oh, did you? I'm sorry.
That's okay.
No, I, did that cover it? I'm sorry. I just went right over my head.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. All right.
Yeah.
Policy, GBCD, background investigation and criminal history records check to replace... Oh, sorry. The policy's title is, "Background Investigation and Criminal History Records Check."
Dash to replace, okay, okay. Perfect. That's not the title. Perfect. All right. All right, moving on to new business.
Is that under old business?
I'll do that under old, yep.
Okay.
Yep, new business, agenda 8.1, approval of district-wide safety plan as required by the New Hampshire Department of Labor.
So, I'm going to have Katie speak to this. She's been leading a group of folks within the district. The Department of Labor requires us to have on a safety plan composed of 50% union members, 50% non-union members, or administrators, I should say. And we don't need to approve it tonight. That's a mistake on the agenda. I'll take the heat for that. It's more for a first read for you folks, so that you can absorb it and then give us some feedback. But I'll turn the floor over to Katie, and Katie, I'll just speak. And could you talk about who's on the committee as well?
Yep, that's what I have, yep. Yeah, so as Lou mentioned, this is driven by an RSA, Department of Labor requirement. We had an existing plan, but it hasn't been updated a number of years. We had committee prior to COVID. COVID hit, then each building did their own safety stuff and did it building by building, but that's not what we're supposed to do. We're supposed to have the district-wide committee made up of both employer and employee reps. And it has to be equal membership, so that way, it's not, you know, just all management. And so, each meeting, if it's uneven, then we have to make people leave. And you can only have, you know, if there's four employers, then there has to be four employees. There doesn't constitute a meeting. So, we formed the committee this year. I want to give a shout out to all of them, because they've worked really hard getting this prepared. So, the employer representatives is myself, Nicole Garrett, our HR coordinator, and also, it was Sharon Feria when she was here, Jay Lilly, our facilities director, Michael Bluen, the assistant principal at the high school. He's actually the chair of the committee, and he's done a lot of work this year, and Kate Gove. And then, the employee representatives is Angela Fico, Leah Lanas, Nan Sol, Doug Bono, and Amanda Walsh. So, the committee's met five times throughout the school year. Our focus, again, has been updating this plan, because we had to have one in place. We used other district plans as examples, that had already been through the process, had vetted through their attorneys. You know, we wanted to start somewhere, so we figured we would do that. And another business administrator in the state sent me their plan and a couple others. So, we use that as like a starting point. We also had Primex come in and give us feedback, as they made sure that we had all the requirements that were due to be in there, so that way, we met all those requirements. The law also changed. That required us to have a student violence plan along with our safety plan. We decided to have them as two separate documents, so that way, we didn't have to revise the safety plan just because we want, you know, if we wanted to revise one and not the other, we didn't want to have to redo the whole thing. So, we have them as two separate documents, and to me, they're two separate things. So, the plan going forward is, once the board takes a look at it, the buildings and grounds committee also took a look at it at their last meeting, so they've already looked at it. Once the board approves it, the committee's plan is to roll this out district-wide to staff in August. There's a pledge sheet in here for people to, you know, document that they've read it, and they're required to follow all of these policies in regards to safety. There's forms in here that they have to fill out if there's an accident or different things like that. The committee will be ongoing each year. Our focus next year will be to tour all the buildings and do inspections of the different classrooms in each of the buildings, make sure that they're following all the safety protocols, do training if we need to, if they're not. We'll also be working on reviewing our workers' comp claims, looking at trends, looking at the student-related ones, to see if we need to provide more training to our staff. If it's, you know, repetitive things that are happening with one particular student, we would review that with our special ed administrators to see if we need to do something there. So, that's kind of the work that we'll be doing as a committee. So, this is your plan here for review. Again, a lot of the safety plan is dictated by state law. There's not much, you know, it's about making sure you're using the, you know, different things. It's more related to custodial, I think, mostly, but also, you know, teachers in their classrooms, making sure that if they're hanging things up, that they're using the proper safety, you know, procedures and things like that. And then, as I mentioned, the student violence plan is in here. It's not very long. We tried to keep it pretty simple. There's forms here, if something were to happen, for the people to fill out, so that it can be investigated. There's a nice flow chart in the back that describes what happens if you are injured and what steps you need to take, and if you're not, these steps you need to take. So, it's there for your review. Again, as Lou mentioned, we don't have to vote on it tonight. My thought was, get you, you know, it's a lot of information. You can digest it, read it. We'll bring it back at the next meeting to approve, as long as we have it approved before the end of the year, so we can roll it out in the fall.
Great. Thank you to the committee for all your work on this. Yes, Board Member Brown?
Just a question. You mentioned Primex. So, has Primex given, blessed this document?
Yes, they attended our meeting and walked through every section with us as we did, as we created it.
Okay, just want to make sure our insurance company is okay with this document. Thank you very much. Glad they were involved.
Great. Any other questions at this point? No, thanks again for all the help. It's a comprehensive and really important document, and I'm sure a lot of hours went into it, so we all appreciate that. Thank you. Anything else? Nope. All right, that's it for new business. Old unfinished business this evening. Agenda item 9.1 is an update on before and after-school program. And I'd like to enter in Agenda item 9.2, our calendar, Somersworth School Board's schedule for school year 24-25 draft. We've already seen this. We just need to vote on that. So, I'm going to enter that in as 9.2 for a vote tonight. Things can change, but this is, we want to be able to have the 24-25 schedule for our board meetings, if there's no objection to that question. Okay. All right, agenda item, yep.
I have a quick question. Looking over this draft, we're talking about this tonight? This is open for discussion?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. When are we talking about it?
9.2. So, we have a 9.1 update, and then this will be Agenda item 9.2 right after.
Okay.
So, not right now, but after.
Thank you.
Yep. All right, so 9.1, our update on before-after-school program. I brought together an ad hoc, which we voted at the last meeting, for an exploratory group of people to talk about after-school. Thank you to Board Member Marsh, thank you to Counselor Cameron, and the families that came, the families that reached out to me personally about their concern about SYC going away. It was a wonderful discussion. I think that I really see as part of our role as school board members is to kind of curate and procure opinions and actively listen in order to make decisions better. And overall, I want to thank everyone that showed up, because it gave clarity and it gave insight to what's happening. And I think that it was needed for a degree of, and kind of wonderful to a degree. The positives is that what we heard from our families is that they love the SYC program, they love the staff, they want to make sure the values are aligned between our school day and our after-school program. And that was wonderful to hear. They've had positive experiences, difficult to do, you know, to be able to be employed, work, many situations that require an after 2:30, 3 o'clock, end of school, end of school day, right? Doesn't always fit in. Although it's not our legal requirement, I think as a cultural, it's our community commitment to after-school programming, and that's what we're kind of voting on today. Due to budget constraints, as we all know, we had to, we had to reduce the subsidizing of our after-school program. However, grateful for the opportunity for the YMCA being the, you know, the organization that's coming aboard, you know, to be able to help us out this. So, we have something to be in place for next school year. Remember, Marsh, and am I forgetting anything else? I mean, I wanted to kind of give an overview. We will be voting on this today. There is one organization to be able to vote on. Communication is, will be in the superintendent and other stakeholders in our district to be able to communicate out to families and kind of get that information out there, what's going on, sooner than later. I think that's important, to be able to communicate and be clear about what we're doing, clear to staff, clear to, you know, new families coming in, and everyone kind of in our group. Yep.
Certainly thank you, Chair Larson. And I think that was really a very good summary of the meeting. And I want to thank Chair Larson for creating the ad hoc. I think it was wise to have members of the, both the school board and a member of the city council, and have additional residents. I say additional, because, as we are too, but additional residents as well. And, you know, the ad hoc, it was one meeting. And, you know, I just want to share some of my thoughts for discussion. Here as an individual board member, that, and part of this is also for folks who are, the whole dozen who are watching. But, as we know, SYC was created a number of years ago, and for the vast majority of the time, it was grant-funded. And really good programming, because of the grants, there were strings attached, like there are with many programs with grants. And it, as Chair Larson stated, it was also partially subsidized in order to keep the rates low for families. And from my knowledge, the, there was a decision that was made in part because of the, those strings, and the thought that, that the grants, there was, there really was an expectation of at some point, moving away from the grants. And so, there was a committee formed between school board, city council, and others, and they recommended to have a collaborative effort of funding between the school board and the city, excuse me, the school district and the city. With the school board, school district, excuse me, funding the majority of it. And I did, as a member, support it at the time. I did publicly express some concern that it would become sort of low-hanging fruit during budget season, because as Chair Larson indicated, it is not a legal obligation. Right? So, I did have concerns about that. And it did get, so, it did make it past the first year. There were some questions, and I thought, oh, here we go, first year, and didn't make it past the second. So, I did jot down some notes from me, mostly for your sake, that it is true that it is not our legal obligation to provide programming or after-school care to our children. It is true that we need to prioritize funding for programming and academics. It is true that we're not childcare providers. The schools district, the city of Somersworth, and government in general cannot be the everything to all. However, I believe we can do more, that we can think differently. We can acknowledge the skyrocketing living costs, including housing, which Chair Larson referenced, generally. We can acknowledge many of our residents are working multiple jobs to make their ends meet. I asked the residents who were in attendance, I asked them point-blank. I gave them an out. They didn't need to answer. But I asked them point-blank, "Could you afford your housing without working?" No, they could not. them point-blank, could you afford your housing without working? No, they could not. We can acknowledge the cost it has on our children, including student performance. Let us acknowledge we need to continue thinking differently, holistically and smarter. What I'd like to do, and may not necessarily tonight, right, but explore ways to lessen the increase on our residents for after-school programming, despite it not being our legal obligation, despite having other priorities. And I'd like to explore ways to do this collaboratively, school district, city. Anyone else? Private partnerships, grants? I think we can do that. We're talking lessening the impact. We're not talking free after-school programming, we're not. The way the numbers work out, based on what I was seeing, okay, so this is from memory. From, if you add up the before care and after care, it adds up to be about $640 some odd dollars a month, right? And by the way, I'm not suggesting that it's a high cost for, for the Y, because people deserve to be paid. People, that's full-time, by the way, it's five days a week. People deserve to be paid. People who do these jobs deserve to be paid. But it's certainly more than what the cost for the SYC program was. So as a member, you know, I would, I would like to be, to explore some options to try to keep the cost low, lower for our residents. Thank you.
Yes, Board Member Wentworth.
I absolutely support Todd and, I'm sorry.
Yep, that's okay.
Chairperson Marsh, and...
Of budget.
Of budget.
Find a way in budget to be able to figure it all out later.
Yeah, and I think, I think it would be, well, I think it would be, it might behoove some, clearly, it's something you're passionate about, and I support a committee or someone really investigating different grants, that we could do different ways, that we could alleviate some of the strain on our families by possible grants or other avenues, so that we can offer the Y. And I think it's awesome that this is even on our, that we all are having this discussion, right? And we have changed from SYC to now offering the Y. But I think it would be a great idea to, you know, form a committee or look into other grants, other ways that could assist the families.
Yeah, thank you.
I support that.
Right. And I think that was kind of the going forward, is this discussion isn't over. For the purpose of this meeting tonight, right, we have not accepted the Y, you know? So we, so the purpose of the meeting really now is that, you know, the budget season went through in such a way that it was, it was, it's later, just the way that it's structured. It's later that we knew that we were not, you know, that we had the amount of money that we did through councils' process as well. So it wasn't that this was been a year. This has been just a really difficult year budget-wise, late in the game, and we're doing our due diligence coming right now. All right, what do we do? How do we communicate this out? I think the conversation isn't over. I think that there's the willingness of community members, elected leaders, parents to come to the table to see what, what is possible. And I think if we all kind of keep that as a central value, that they want to keep, our values is kind of coming up a lot, values in school, values, values in after-school, values in our, in committees, I think we'll be able to move forward. Yep, go ahead, Board Member Tierney. Thank you.
I just was curious, for the group that did meet, the ad hoc committee, actually, I guess my first question is, did they meet with the YMCA as well, like it was a discussion? No, it was just the ad hoc. Okay. Has there been any, have any concerns risen from, you know, because it sounds like this is our option, right? We either accept this, the Y, or we have no, we have nothing.
This is, right, right, exactly.
Okay, so I'm fine to support it because I, you know, it seems like it's fine. I haven't heard anything yet, but are, is there anything we should be aware of that has come up as a, well, not sure about this?
So I think I'm going to just ask the superintendent or you just to speak to this a little bit. Yes, the concerns that we've received emails from constituents and family members about, about things, absolutely. And the cost, who will run the program? Will it be much different in staff or overall? What does it look like? You know, the uncertainty of it. Yep, Board Member Clark.
So I, when we, when they came to, you know, approach our board with coming into our school, we had questions during the ad hoc committee. Was there any, you just said they weren't communicating that way, but did they answer our questions? Because we had, we had specific questions, like if they were able to do more, like funding for our low-income families, and there's other things. So I don't know if we ever heard back from that, because that was kind of a point, too, where we were trying to decide if this is what we were going to do, is if they...
They have a bigger pool, I think, in like the documents from what I saw.
They were going to get back to us. I guess over a short day, it circled back and gotten back for our information.
For low income, I think it's like what they have...
I think it's going to depend on who signs up, too, because it's, it's going to be dependent on that person's financial situation and what they, what they qualify for. So I don't think you're going to know those answers until the people actually sign up. You may want to give it next year, if you go with the Y, see how it plays out, then determine if it's something you want to help lessen the cost, because they, the parents could be paying less than they're paying now. If they qualify, you don't know until you get it under your belt and see how it works. So it may want to be like, don't keep it on your radar and talk about it all year, but maybe wait until you have a year under your belt to kind of see what happens.
Was it a clarifying answer, Board Member Marsh? Okay, okay, go ahead. I'll have you go first, and then Saldati, Wentworth, just because you...
Right. And I get where Katie Kraus is coming from. I think it was something we discussed at the ad hoc somewhat. And I think the concern was of not, of parents not knowing of whether or not the cost will go down. That, you know, there was a thought of, well, let's see how it goes. And, you know, as parents start signing up, we'll have a better idea. But there was some concern that parents, there are parents that may not sign up because of the initial cost. So it may not be, it may not represent the, the true challenge to some of the parents.
Right. Our communication is kind of keyed in order to link them up with the Y. Saldati, followed by Wentworth.
Yeah, I, I could be remembering this incorrectly, but from the presentation, I thought they had also mentioned that aside from the like individual case-by-case, need-based tuition, that they did say something about that they themselves provide applicants with resources to apply themselves for separate support. So let's say they aren't applicable for the Y's financial aid program, or, you know, they don't meet a threshold, that the Y still does also provide a bunch of resources, which I don't know what those resources are, if that's already resources we're tapping or what. But, but yeah, I think it is in a, from a communication standpoint of getting, getting the word out, because of course, we don't want there to be a massive drop-off in people in need who think that this is something that really isn't accessible to them. So I do think in some ways, you know, the school board and the SAU are the sort of linchpin to say to the, to the parents, and then with the Y, to like help bridge that gap, so that it's like, no, 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 don't, you know, don't turn away, don't, don't take your kid out of the program. Like, let's find a way to make this work, instead of, oh, sorry, it's, it's cost prohibitive, this isn't for me, I have to go elsewhere.
It does say under financial assistance, that they are licensed and accept state assistance through the state of New Hampshire, but that they also offer their own financial assistance for families that need it. So it's two, you're right, it's two different things. There's the state, and then the Granite Y also provides some financial assistance.
Yeah, and I don't think it's their first rodeo here. They, they work in other cities where there are families in need. So I think they're pretty familiar with how to go about helping folks. By the way, I just wanted to mention the Rochester Child Gear Center, I anticipated them having a proposal. It didn't come through. That's why you have one proposal. And I don't think, I'm concerned about waiting too much longer, to be honest with you, because we really need to have a decision soon, because there are a number of things that have to take place over the next couple of months, so the program's up and ready to go when kids arrive in the fall.
Yeah, so I guess just, oh, I'm sorry. Did I...
Do you have a question to Lou?
Yeah. Well, like a follow-up. I mean, just a, I'm so sorry. No, I, okay, just, so I guess just to clarify then, my question about concerns, I wasn't thinking so much like community, like is this too expensive, whatever, for, I was thinking more like, has there anything come up about the program itself, any red flags? That, that's all. Just because this is the only one. And as much as I want to say, yeah, we need this, let's do it, I just don't want to be blind, you know, I don't want us to be blindsided by like, wow, there was this thing that people were, you know...
No, I thought the proposal was well-reasoned. Katie and I met with them. They came through on the deadlines that we asked them to meet. They answered all of our questions. So we felt good meeting with them, Katie. I don't want to speak for you, but you're nodding. We felt good about the people, you know, we got to know them through a couple of different meetings. And then when they came and presented here, I felt comfortable in, with their presentation. I really think they're family-focused and will do the best that they can to try to get folks, parents lined up with resources that they can access. That's, that's my take on them.
Yeah, Wentworth, Brown, Clark, then Marsh.
I just think that word-of-mouth and our communication is going to be super key to any kind of success. And that's, you know, getting some of the current members, families on board. And, but I, I did want to touch on that Katie had mentioned before, is that they could possibly be paying less. No one's going to know until they start tapping into all those resources. But I, for one, support, I mean, this is much more than we've ever been able to offer before. So.
I have a comment and three questions. My comment is, I absolutely support the school district looking into out-of-school care, because I liken it to the rec department's summer camp. It's at least an option for people and for the city, in this instance, the school district, doing legwork to find a provider is a huge relief for working parents having used this kind of a service. So my specific questions after that comment, I know that this was a proposal. Was there an RFP that was put out? How did we get proposals?
No, we just contacted folks that we knew were in the area that did this.
Okay.
They're actually not going to be paid by us, right? They're not providing a service for the district. If we're allowing them in-kind costs to use our facilities, but they're really not providing any service directly for us. They're actually a vendor for parents using our space.
And I didn't, similar to the Head Start, I guess, that's already currently at Idlehurst. They pay us a fee for the facility's use, but it's not our, you know, it's not our program. They use our building. It's kind of the same thing.
Yeah, and I didn't mean to, by asking about the RFP process, that I was insinuating that something nefarious had happened. I, you know, I understand when you've got a void, you canvas and you try to find the best fit. One thing I did notice with the proposal, on page two, under purpose, it says that it's going to cover after-school vacations.
The inconsistency.
There's that inconsistency. This is purpose of the proposal. Our goal is to expand our childcare services, dot, dot, dot. This includes no school day, early release, snow, snow day childcare. So then, when I go back to page three and look at the very bottom, no school days in inclement weather, it's carving out a bunch of things that they had said on page two. So it's just a clarification that I think would be helpful. I know that the subcommittee is working on this, but that was one inconsistency to have addressed.
We weren't fine-lining the agreement. We were more kind of a community listening, active listening space. But that, that is, I think that typically at their, their facilities, YMCA facilities, they offer that. And I don't think the schools can, but...
The next sentence says, "We offer full day for additional fee at the YMCA of Somersworth branch." So the school portion would be closed, but they would offer it to families at their other branch location.
Anything else? Yep.
That was it. And I, thank you very much for those explanations. I think they were helpful. All right, Board Member Clark.
So this may be a question for Chair Marsh, right? I lose my head. Or Katie. I keep, why, oh, poor member. Sorry, Chair. I don't know. Phew, this is, these late nights, man. I don't know. Anyways, we talked about the last meeting about the school board, possibly funding parts of something, like giving something to, is that something that we're still looking into with?
We're not, because the direction was, we're not funding SYC.
Sure. No, but I meant like families, like on the other side. So we're funding families. So I thought our last meeting, when they came in for their proposal, we had said, well, maybe we could do something...
Yeah, like we would give money to...
Get a little fund.
Yeah, like the city or this, on our side to give money to be able, I think we don't have that bandwidth, I don't believe, to be able to put anything in there right at this moment. I think that the Y has access to so much more money to, like have access for grants and other supportive systems. I mean, I think, and Board Member Marsh is also supportive, like going forward, we need to assess how this is going, right?
I agree.
We need to see who's signing up, how, what the, like, keep listening to, you know, if there's any hurdles. I think we're going to be in partnership with the Y and families and, you know, whatever that shapes up with. I think, I believe I said that. But at this very moment in time, we don't have the funds to be able to put into a fund base, please correct me if I'm wrong, to be able to subsidize at all.
Sure.
Just because of the budget constraints this year.
So this is, I want this out there for the public to say that potentially, I'm thinking about families that are at that cutoff. They do not qualify, but they need some kind of help. So I'm thinking about those families that they just don't make, and they make just enough, and they can't get, so I would like us to potentially put this somewhere on record that we will look into possibly putting a fund together.
Reach out to your elected leadership at large, your ward. If, if that is the case, reach out to the SAU. I mean, keep, speak to us, you know, sometimes, you know, we only hear kind of like when there's concerns, but speak to us about that, because we need to know to be able to make wise decisions going forward, especially with budget. Was there anyone else that wanted to speak to this? Okay. Yep. Oh, yes, Board Member Marsh. Chair Marsh.
Thank you for those words, Vice Chairperson Clark. Yeah. I just want to say that I think the Y, I believe the Y is a good, good program. I recognize that they have a track record. I recognize their experience in doing this. You know, we always have a choice, but the choice of doing nothing isn't a good one. So I recognize that. So, you know, I will support this, this evening. My, I think my concern is what Board Member Clark indicated, that, and I think, no doubt, I'm more sensitive about this because of what I do for my employment, right? I see many people in my human service office that do not qualify for many programs. They do not qualify for childcare through the state. They do not qualify for SNAP, food stamps, and many other programs. But they're in my office. And it's not because they're spent necessarily, some are, but it's not necessarily because they're spending their money unwisely. It's because they don't have enough money to go out, despite working sometimes multiple jobs. The cost of rents have skyrocketed, and living in general. And so my concern goes out to those families that are on that, I think, cusp that Board Member Clark is talking about. And, and so I hope that, that we continue to explore. I hope, I recognize that there can be a school of thought of, we should just, you know, we shouldn't do it, right? Because, you know, we have those... Because, you know, we have other priorities. But they indicated that, I asked the question, and others, I think, followed up on it a bit, that there are, maybe not many, but there is at least one or so school district that do partially subsidize the program to try to keep the amounts low, knowing every year that amount's probably long-hanging fruit in the school board budget. So I recognize that. So please, let's, you know, keep that conversation alive, including funding, whether it's from the school district and/or the city itself. If, there's been talk about additional, potentially additional funding, depending on how the Senate vote goes, right? It's, the Finance Committee should be voting on that soon, and then the full Senate. And, you know, then maybe perhaps there's a potential there. But we may not all, we may not know those parents that are choosing not to because they simply can't afford it. And we may not know the parents that don't sign up for it. And I just want to be a voice for them, so.
Okay.
But I generally support the program.
Heard, thank you. Board member Soldati.
Yeah, I mean, in some ways, this, you just mentioned this, but I wondered a little bit about, and again, this, these might be stupid questions because I'm also just new to this position, but of, yeah, working with the city to establish some sort of, obviously there's no line item in our budget now, but a, whether it's a scholarship or a fund or some means of, in lieu of a budget line item, saying that actually there is still need here and it isn't going to go away. And I wondered too, because we, I assume someone has, you know, the, the families that have been using SYC, that actually there is, it's, these aren't, you know, unknown quantities. These are real people, our neighbors. And to, I don't know if there is any way to liaise with those people, whether through the Y, connecting them or whatever, to find out, yeah, who are the individuals who are in need and what is the amount of need? And to bring that to the city to say, this was cut, this is the need, how are we going to make up the difference so that it isn't just us on our own? Or like you're pointing out back on those families, but really showing up for them to say, we realize this has been, you've been impacted by, by this change, so.
Yeah, I think that intention is important, and I'm dedicated to seeing it through. I think there's others here too. So with that, right, with that kind of knowing, knowing, and people listening, and please reach out to us because it's just really important. But with that, you know, for today's, for tonight's meeting purpose, we're looking for a motion for the district to engage the YMCA to provide before and after care programming for the 25, 24, 25 school year. So that would be the motion, and I think that's a smart one, to be able to start the process, communicate, link up families, get the, get the proper information to people ahead of time. I would really, you know, advocate for that, so.
I would like to make a motion for the Y to provide before and after care for the Summersworth School District for 24, 25 school year.
Just for this year, yep. Oh, the district. Is that okay? The district, the district.
Can I?
Yep, amend it to, the superintendent.
That.
Go ahead.
Amend it, amend it to not engage the Y, but to have the superintendent engage in discussions with the Y to provide those services for the 2024, 25 school year.
Accepted? Yes, okay, great. Do I have a second? Great. Any discussion? Okay. All in favor, say aye. Aye, all right. Thank you.
I just want to say thank you. I, this was, you know, real, real concerning to me, having the cuts. And we really tried to look at, what is the backup plan? We've tried to do this all along over the past couple of months, and I'm just grateful for your support and taking the time to listen to the Y when they came in. I appreciate that. And we don't want to leave our families hanging, so. And now my, my next step is going to be getting a letter out to parents this week and letting them know. And then I will call the Y and say, how do we want to communicate this out? So I really appreciate your support. And we had, and Katie, I want to thank you too. It was a tight timeline, and I'm just grateful we're at the point we're at right now. We have an option, right? So, anyway, thank you.
I just have a quick question, just when you're thinking about communication and, do we have, and this, I guess, is just a general question, when the school district communicates with families, knowing that we have a lot of families who, maybe the parent's English isn't their first language, do we communicate in all the different languages so that the parent, the people can read?
That's a great question. I haven't done that in sending out like cancellation notices. We do require it for special education. Let me look at, that's a good point.
Because I, yeah, I'm just thinking especially, you know, as we've been talking about the families in need, you know, and, and the concern that, well, they might see that number and immediately say, oh, well, we can't do that. And then they, that's it, they stop, right? But maybe if they can read something clearly in the language of their, you know, their native tongue, then, and that's clearly says, please, you know, options or financial, you know, assistance is available, so.
Anything we'll let staff.
I'll talk with the SOL staff about.
And the Y may actually provide that too, with their communications. They may have that.
All right, great, thanks. All right, moving to the agenda item 9.2. It was already on first read at our last meeting, our Summersworth School Board schedule for the 24, 25 school year. Let's get a motion on the table first and then open it for discussion. So is there a motion to approve the schedule as presented?
I move to approve the schedule as presented.
Yep, great, second. All right, all right, any discussion? Board member Clark.
Oh, thanks. I just have a quick question. Why are we meeting twice a month every month? Is that a reason? Because in the past, in the past years, it's been one school board meeting per month. When did that policy change that it was two? Oh, my gosh.
It's always been the second and, whatever, the second and.
This is exhausting.
There's only been a few months where we've done one, and it's usually because of a holiday or something, but it's always been two.
All right, I guess I was dreaming.
I think, I think we're not going to try to be too heavy on other things. I'm trying to set, set the tone. Listen, it's, it's an hour in, I tried 20 minutes. If we really do not need to meet, we will not meet. This, this, today, for what our discussion was worth it, otherwise it was a really light agenda for this one. I think our next one will be light as well. We'll see, right? To show up, you know, I, you know, we'll, we'll knock out what we don't need to show up for. We don't need, it could be an email.
You could, I mean.
That's one. I think, I think we have to legally meet once a month, legally, unless something important happens and we have to meet twice a month.
I don't know if the charter says you have to meet twice a month or not.
Let's look it up, right?
Legally, you have to meet at least once a month, I believe. And, you know, you're going to get into April where you could cut a meeting out due to school vacation. Same holds true for, no, the same holds true for February. You could, you know, possibly go to one meeting in August, but you really, yeah, September's a busy month, October, and then you get into your budget season, so.
I guess the only thing though, just to keep in mind, you know, that, that could impact policy, right? Because then you can't get through as many, like your first reading, second reading, you know, you're waiting a whole nother month.
Well, I'm saying that we could. We could meet twice a month.
Yeah, I'm just, yeah.
Just saying, like, okay, we need a policy, we need to get this through, let's add another month. I'm just saying, but I don't think we have to put it on, like.
It's always better to schedule in advance and cancel than it is to try to get everybody scheduled on last minute.
All right, board member Marsh, then Wentworth.
Well, thank you for thinking differently, board member Clark, right? Why not, right? Right, there's, I think there's an imperfect balance where we don't want to meet for the sake of meeting. At the same time, we want to try to stay on top of things too. And I think that can be that challenge with the first and second reading. But, you know, I think it's something to keep on the radar.
Thank you. Perfect attendance. Board member Marsh. Yes, board member Wentworth.
To follow up on, board member Clark's discussion, we, if we, if a meeting were to be canceled, what, what does that, like, what does that look like? Like chairperson Larson, chairwoman Larson, would you cancel it? Like, would you have to cancel it two weeks ahead of time?
If the superintendent has, I mean, if we have nothing on our agenda and we really do not have to meet, it hasn't happened often. We have had some short meetings. You know, just keep in mind, as a board member, to miss three, three regular board meetings in a row is kind of like a, you know, without communication is, you know, we'll be concerned about you, I'll be at your house to see how you are. But that's kind of a, you're out, you know, and we don't, you don't hear from anyone, we'll try to fill, the city council, we'll go to city council to fill that position. That's like, you know, the missing, but.
Your policy says at least monthly, it doesn't say twice.
Monthly, monthly, yes. I want to make, I want to make amendment.
You want to make an amendment?
I do.
Well, I just, the only comment I want to make is that I, in the two, over two years now that I've been serving on this board, right, and has it been that long? I don't think I've ever, we've ever shown up and I've thought to myself, yeah, we really didn't need to meet tonight. Like, there's always been something. And you're right, sometimes it's just been a brief meeting because there was a particular purpose, like.
It's supposed to be 20 minutes.
I think we can get that done in one month of meetings. I already logged.
Right, yeah, I don't know. I mean, I'm not saying, that's just, that's just a thought that comes to my mind, is like, I've never, it's not like the, yeah, this could have been an email.
I'm going to make a proposal.
That's the calendar.
I'm going to make it, you want to hear my, my proposal?
First, okay, so let's go through this. So we have a, we have a motion on the table, and if you'd like to make an amendment, right? So like officially, like going through this, anyone step in? You make, you'll make a motion to amend, right? And that needs a second.
Okay, I motion to amend. Second.
But say what, what the, what you're amending.
Is to amend the Summersworth School Board's schedule for a school year 2024, 2025. And this is what I want to amend. I want to take off one of the days, one of the months, in August, and then keep two for September, two for October, take off the one for November. There's already one for December.
Thanksgiving.
And then take off a second one for January. Are you listening? Okay. Maybe keep January because budget.
Just remember, though, that's not going to allow you to do a first and a second. We're going to have to wait a whole nother month to get things approved.
So I, just for August, right, August, we're going to keep two for September, two for October, right? One for November. I want, December can stay. January's two because we have budgets. February is a short month, why are we doing two in February? You guys can all nix this, it's fine.
February, you added the extra so that you had more time for input on your budget from the public. We added that last year because you felt.
And then March two, April two, but May should have one, and then June should have one.
Can you say that one, it was.
So August, one.
Yeah, because it was discussion, I couldn't keep track of it. So August, one.
Yeah, so September would be two.
Yep.
October will be two.
Mm-hmm.
November will be two.
No, I thought you said one.
You said one.
Oh, I'm trying to get down to it, it's fine.
Because the 26 is close to that.
December, so December is already one. Should we make November one or two, guys?
I can cancel meeting whenever you, we want.
All right, so, so I just got some, okay. So November one, January two because of budget, February two, I guess, March two, April two, May one.
Can I ask for if there's a motion? Can, like, I'm, I'm confused. Like, can we do, like, would each date be a motion? You know what I mean?
She's making an amendment for what she just said.
Read the amendment motion. Amendment motion. It hasn't been seconded yet.
Okay.
Right.
Okay. Thank you for your motion.
Oh, thanks, guys. It's really?
I will make another commitment to not having meetings for meetings' sakes. Chairs of your committee, please be mindful of people's time. An hour long should be enough to get things done, but I value your time and you show up, and I really value this board's incredible time over the years. Yes, Soldati, followed by Tierney.
I'm, I'm very sorry I didn't support the motion, but I also want to say, just as, again, I'm new here, that I do, something I've become increasingly more aware of about this position is that it isn't just about that I show up and I do the things, and obviously the workload is, is significant if we have two meetings a month and then two committee meetings, so it's four meetings a month. I totally agree. However, something I've started to recognize, and it's really just from watching you all, is how much a lot of us coming here is to show our community that we are showing up, and it's signaling to them that we are here, that we're present. So even if a meeting's 20 minutes or, or whatever the meeting agenda might be, that, that the people who've elected us or the people who depend on us to do this work know that we're here. And so I, that's why I didn't support it, is just because I would think that it would maybe send a message that we don't intend to send to the, to the residents.
I, yeah, I would, I don't have the policy in front of me, but I would suggest perhaps it's worth looking at the policy to just make a statement like, you know, meetings may be canceled at the chairperson's discretion, you know, just something so that, that, that is sort of there. My, my big concern was just, with all due respect, board member Clark, it just seemed like they were, well, I just, I, I wanted some rationale for why certain ones were being cut and like this far ahead of time, right? And so we just don't know, and, and like, I'd rather have them be there as placeholders and then like, oh, you know, we really, it's only going to be 15 minutes and we could just add this information to the next one because it, you know. So that, that was, I was just concerned about this sort of, just, yeah, blanket, you know, change. But yeah, so maybe the policy, just to, as a, you know, CYA, right? Just kind of like, hey.
We'll put that on in August. Wentworth, then Brown, yep.
So one of the, one of the things too that I want to add is that, you know, this is part of the reason why I canceled my committee meetings, just because for the educational, a lot of what my work will, or the committee's work will be focused on is for Assistant Superintendent, who is not here yet. So we wanted to get that person on board. And so I think it is, I think we're all incredibly mindful of not having meetings just for a meeting's sake. If it was like, I mean, I could, I could jump on board for August and November, but nothing else.
And mind you, we, there, there is a retreat in the works for this summer, so that August 13th could be a part of that. Like, we could. We didn't have one last summer. We're going to have an amazing one this, this summer. And I'll send out a link to be like where people's schedules are because it'll be, it'll be wonderful. But it could be on the 13th, but any scheduling, you know, other things, please let me know. But board member Brown, please.
Sorry to ask a point of order because we don't have a second on this motion, yet we've had, I guess, public comment because it wasn't discussion because we didn't have a second on the motion. So I didn't know if you were going to offer, is there a second? And if there's silence, I guess we move on, or if people want to continue public comment?
Oh, no, yeah, right. There's a, there's a motion on the table to, so about the calendar, right? So speaking to the calendar, and we did speak to that, we're kind of getting in the, in the weeds a little bit, I guess, with, because we, in order for discussion to happen, you need a second. I don't see a second. So there's a motion on the table to accept the Summersworth School Board's schedule for next year as proposed. We've already seen this at our previous meeting, it just wasn't on the agenda this evening, and we have a second. So I'm going to ask all in favor, say aye. Aye. Or.
Yeah, we need some clarity, yeah.
A motion on the table to accept the calendar as presented.
Yep, that's the only motion that was seconded.
That's the only motion that was seconded. So I'm going to ask for your, for your vote. Yep, go ahead.
What is that motion, calendar motion seconded?
Yes.
Katie, do you, Katie has it in the minutes.
Yeah, not, not, not the, not the taking it away, but with all intention, if we do not need to meet, we will, we will.
Yeah, there was a motion by Susan, seconded by Marcia, to approve as presented originally, yes.
Right. That's all right. We can, we can meet for another, you know, no, no, but I think, I think we understand the intention and, yeah. So all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No?
No.
Okay. Calendar is adopted, it can be changed, love to look at the policy, if we can just put the policy in our minds for early school near year, just to say, just to make it a little bit more refined. All right, future meeting dates, our penultimate meeting, May 28th, 7:00 PM. Comments by visitors this evening? I do not believe there are any, any comments by board members. Thank you for indulging me in speaking to this, gratitude and appreciation in the beginning. Yes, Board Member Wentworth.
I'd like to make a motion.
Oh, no, it's Board Member, Board Member comments. But you can, okay. I don't want to silence anyone, but there's anyone? Yes, Board Member Marsh, go ahead.
Since I really couldn't comment during the last discussion, I guess, the, the non-discussion regarding the calendar, I just want to say, I really respect Board Member Clark's just putting an option out there. I've been known to do that sometimes, you know, I talked about something earlier today, right? And I wasn't on, an island all alone, but, you know, I was a little bit on that peak all alone. And that's okay, right? Because we all have different views and represent different constituents and so forth, so, but I respect that, so, thank you.
Absolutely. All right. All right. Comments by board members, thank you so much, and looking for a motion to go into non-public part 91, A32A-C.
Motion to go into non-public, 91-A, semicolon, 3, 2A through C.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Maggie Larson, Todd Marsh, Carrie Clark, Sarah O'Brien-Hart, Crystal D St. Croix, Marcia Brown, Barbara Wentworth, Susan Tierney, Gemma Soldati.